... manager, Tim Tingey, to lead us in that pledge these. If everyone would please rise. Thank you, Mr. Tingey. We're honored today, as we were a couple of weeks ago, to meet one of our new police officers. So I'll turn the time over to Chief Russo and introduce one of the newest members of our force. And I think he's a proud resident of Cottonwood Heights, so we have a special welcome for him.
Well, thank you. He is a proud resident of Cottonwood Heights, and we're lucky to have him. His name is Steve Flort, and he's here with his newly- congratulations, fiancee Kayla. Would you like to both come up? And I'll introduce you. I'll let him tell you about himself, but Officer Flort came to us from Salt Lake City. He was presently, or previously, assigned to the airport authority. He lives in our city and wanted to be part of this organization and part of the city. And he's very skilled and competent, and we're proud to have him here. So with that, this is his badge. I will ask you to pin it on him and anoint him, and then we'll-
If you draw blood, we have the paramedics here.
Congratulations. They're trying to get away.
No, Steve, come on up.
They're just going to want you to tell something about yourself, and they might have some questions for you.
Well, Steve, introduce the significant other next to you and to break the ice.
Okay, so this is my fiancee, Kayla Grimm. We met each other back in high school. So, high school sweethearts.
Which high school?
Skyline High School.
Okay. It's my alma mater, so now I really like you.
Excellent. So, yeah, we met each other in high school. Been dating for quite a while, and then one thing led to another, and we kind of decided to make it official.
Great.
So after seven and a half, eight years, like, yeah, might as well, you know? So, and like Chief said, you know, I came from Salt Lake City Airport Police. I was out there for just about a year. I enjoyed it. It was a great pace, great department out there. But, you know, I always wanted to work for Cottonwood Heights. It was, it's always been, you know, dream of mine to work up here. And I was lucky enough in October to buy a house up here. So it was, it just felt like the right move. And ever since I've joined this agency, it's felt like, it felt like a family, and I'm really happy to be here.
Thank you.
Commute shorter.
Commute shorter. Now, we appreciate your selection. We think we have a fine department, and people like you just make it that much better.
Appreciate it.
And we pray nightly that we'll return him home safely to your fiancee. And is there a wedding date set?
Not yet. A lot of people have asked that, and we're just kind of-
Well, it's a natural-
Yeah, we're just going to let it kind of, let the, just let it happen.
All right. Well, welcome, welcome.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. Is anyone else here with your family?
Nope.
All right. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Would you, Mayor, like me to go on to honorary colonels?
Yeah, please. We have a couple of our honorary colonels here with us today, and I see some other honorary colonels here as well. So you may want to introduce those who are here in support, as well as the new ones.
We do, and they are normally business leaders in our community. They have been great for the police department. They've been great supporters of myself and the individual officers and the city. They are truly the face of the city. And they're just, whenever I sit in a room with them, I don't even know what to say because I'm still a little starstruck because of who they are and that they want to be part of an organization in the police department. So let me call up Mr. Michael Doolin, who, as you know, is a co-owner of Hillside Tire, and they have five locations. They are so good to us and the city, and they represent all the good things that the city represents and just the good things in our, in our business community. With that, we have a badge that goes along with it. It's my pleasure and honor to-
Chief, thank you very much.
-endure that and shake your hand.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And no, you don't-
Don't walk away. Give us a couple of comments.
Well, just thinking, my wife and I have something in common with the new officer. We've met in high school, also, Skyline High School. The problem is, we've probably been married longer than he's old, you know? I mean-
Wait a minute, what year, Skyline?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-six.
Really? Well, good for you.
I win again.
So, we've been up, we've been in business up in this area, Cottonwood Heights. We opened in nineteen ninety-one. So it's, it's been a pleasure for us doing business up here.
Well, we appreciate your efforts for years and your partner, who I see back there, who's been-
Right.
And not just with our pleas, but in other community vets for decades. So, yeah, we thank you.
Right. We try to support what we can do, and also, I got to say, the police department, since they come on, was it two thousand six?
Eight.
Two thousand eight. It's been a great thing for us, and our business has been safer, and we really appreciate it, so.
We appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tim Blair? Mr. Blair's walking up.
Did he go to Skyline, too?
You don't get, have to, you have to come up, too, so.
I do.
Yeah, that's the rule, isn't it? Yes.
I don't think so.
Well, I think you've just been outoated. Come on up.
I'm not sure.
Tim and his wife Cheryl are residents of District Four. They have two insurance companies. They live in the city. Their business is here in the city. It's just over on Twenty-third and Fort Union, in that area there.
Hillside Business Plaza.
Right. And they've, they're new members, too, the honorary colonels. We appreciate all that they do and the support of the police department and just the general support that they give to the community in general. And again, like the others, you will not find a more, just a better group of honorable men and women anywhere. So thank you for that. I, too, have a badge for you as well, and we welcome you to the honorary colonels.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. He gave me a bone.
What is that? Go ahead, please, a couple of comments. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm just happy to be a part of this, and I look forward to supporting the Colonel Association and the police force here.
Tell us a little bit about your business. What type of insurance is it?
I do group health insurance, and her agency does commercial insurance.
Okay. Well, so you're not just honorary colonels, you're also part of our local business community, which we appreciate as well.
Yeah.
So thank you for your willingness to serve, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And I think with that badge is a get-out-of-jail-free card, too, if you need it.
That's what he told me.
No, I did not. Thank you.
All right.
We did have a misuse of a badge like that.
Oh, yes, yeah. All right, well, those are exciting times to recognize our honorary colonels and to welcome a new member to our police force. So we appreciate both that service from a volunteer point of view and for the growth of our police department. So thank you for all those members. Looking at our agenda, the next item is citizen comment, and we're going to do something just a little bit different tonight. Hopefully you'll indulge me on that, because I know many of you are here as a result of the vote tonight, potentially on the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan. So we're going to break public comment into two parts. Those who would like to comment on something other than Wasatch Boulevard, we'd ask you to comment first, and then I'm going to have our, our planning director give a brief presentation about where we've been and where we're going with the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan, because I think there's a ton of misinformation. Hopefully he can share that, and after he shares that, then we'll allow people to comment on that draft or that proposed plan, if that's all right. So I'm going to call a name, and if you want to comment on Wasatch Boulevard, I ask you to say "Wasatch Boulevard," and I'll call your name again. If it's non-Wasatch Boulevard, please come up. Okay? All right. Thank you. Lynn, you're the first on my list.
I work on the Wasatch Boulevard.
Oh, it's up on the right-hand side. That's why I didn't see it. Okay. Nancy?
Wasatch Boulevard.
Oh, we got two Nacies. Nancy Hardy, I'm sorry.
You have two Linds also.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. I just was thinking of something from the last meeting on June eighteenth, when, when you were taking comments on the budget, and some citizens made some comments on the budget. And also, at the same meeting, y'all voted on the budget. So it just made me think about the comments that people made, that you didn't, y'all didn't really have, like, a discussion or com, or, or talk about the comments that people made.
Yeah, it wasn't a public hearing. That's public comment, which we do every week, yeah.
Okay, so, okay-
We had a public hearing on the budget previously.
Okay, so I was just wondering, because it kind of was almost like people made comments, but then y'all voted, and then the comments weren't taken into consideration, so. And then also, there was somebody here that asked a question. I don't remember what it was offhand, but I think Mr. Tingey was going to write back to him for the answer. So sometimes we want to know what the answers are, too, so it made me go back to that thought about maybe a Q and A meeting sometime, where people can ask questions of everybody here and then get some answers. I don't know if that could be worked into a city council meeting or a separate meeting, but whatever that question was, I thought, oh, that would be interesting to hear, but it was going to be just written back to him, so.
Yeah, maybe someday we could do it right here thirty minutes before, you know? It's scary.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. Is it Ryan Crandall?
Yes, later, please.
Wasatch Boulevard.
Right.
Hold, okay, hold on. Catherine Peterson? Ah, Catherine.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for being here. So I would like to ask for more focus on current citizens here, instead of chasing the golden carrot. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm writing that down. Joe Clay?
So I have two comments, one related to what-
Okay, yep. Why don't you come on up now and talk about non-Wasatch, then you can come back up in a minute, yeah.
So first of all, I'd like to say thank you for being here and for all of the work, and I know it's very hard, especially when you get bombarded from about a million different sides, to make any decisions and move forward. So what, what I'm asking is to ease some of my frustration and maybe some of the frustration of other people in the community. And one of my frustrations is the website is sometimes difficult to navigate, to figure out what's going on, when you're making decisions, when you're looking for public input. And so for me, that's frustrating, because I feel like it's part of my civic duty to be involved in my community and to help support the kinds of decisions and the things that are, are being made. So I'm going to ask that the Cottonwood newsletter that goes out once a month include important information about upcoming decisions, when there's going to be invitations for public discussion on issues, and not have it just be a report on what's been done or what's going on in the school, or which kids or which businesses we want to recognize, but to shift the focus to being, have, to sharing not just what's going on in the community, but also on what's happening and what are major decisions that are coming up, and when you are going to be open for public comment that actually will have some kind of influence on the decisions that you make.
Okay, thank you. I know you're not going to like me to say this, but I think we want to be real sensitive to not applaud or just the opposite, boo anyone, because we want everyone to be able to say their opinion without any pressure either way. So appreciate that understanding. And real quickly, Joe, we had actually talked about that exact subject just a few minutes ago in the work, business, in the work session, so very timely.
Ooh, just kidding. Yeah, echoing what Nancy was saying, a lot of different people use different platforms. Some people rely on email, some people rely on Facebook, some are on Twitter, some are on Instagram, some are on Parler, some are on Gab. There's a whole variety of things out there. And what I would ask, you guys do that, maybe even send the agenda to, for everyone who signs up for it, maybe even email out or send the agendas, send the status reports and that kind of thing to all the people that sign up for the various services. And then we blast all the different things we communicate across all the top ten, twelve services that there are. Because a lot of the folks that I've talked to over the past couple of weeks, they see some things, but they don't see some other things. And I don't know if that's because I'm not following, or I'm not, you know, on the, whatever the equivalent on Twitter is, and some other things. But anyway, a lot of different people, the, the diversification of communication platforms on social networks is really, really starting to spread out. So I just need to make sure that, that we hit all those different things and that we're pushing that stuff out there, not just on alert that this is a meeting coming up, but here's the meeting and here's the agenda. And even for the Planning Commission, here's the Planning Commission meeting, and here's the things we're discussing, that kind of thing, with links to docs and that kind of stuff. I think that'd be very helpful. That's it.
Thank you, Tim. Amelia Ortega?
Wasatch.
Wasatch, okay. I'll call in just a minute. Lynn McAdams?
Wasatch.
Okay, just a minute. Nancy Kuhn?
Wasatch.
Okay. Ron Schwartz?
Wasatch.
Okay. Deborah Case? We know Deborah.
Deborah, was Wasatch.
Okay, welcome. All right, thank you. Okay, before we call the, refer to the public comment on the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan, I'm going to turn some time over now to Mike Johnson, our Director of Planning and Economic Development. So, Mike, turn it to you.
To address some of the, the public comments that have been received recently regarding the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan, and to just refresh the process for those listening or attending and engaged in this meeting tonight, I'd like to spend a few minutes just going over a few things. And first, I'll go over the role of a master plan in general, any master plan. I'll then spend a few minutes summarizing the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan itself, some of its goals and recommendations, and then provide a brief overview of the public input process and the process that has led us to this point tonight. So, starting with the role of a master plan, and I apologize, there's a lot of information, and I didn't have time to memorize the script, so I've got it written down here. The role of any master plan is similar to that of the city's general plan. It is a long-range planning document that establishes a clear direction and vision of the future. Over time, it is used to guide the current and future city leadership in making decisions, setting policies, allocating budget, and requesting funding. Like a general plan, it includes goals, objectives, and recommendations for various, various areas of interest, including land use, development, transportation, recreation, the environment, sustainability, and more. Whereas a general plan is a citywide vision, a master plan is specific to a localized area of a city. A master plan, once adopted, remains a living document continually guided by public input. As the city works to implement the recommendations of any master plan, it should provide regular assessment and updates as needed through the proper public hearing process of Planning Commission and City Council public hearings to maintain the proper vision for an area. An area master plan does not initiate construction, approve development, or create any binding ordinance. Formal implementation of recommendations is a multiple-step process, but it's all built on the foundation of an approved master plan. With that context, I'll provide a brief overview and summary of the Wasatch Boulevard Master We've heard comments from some that believe this is simply a road expansion plan. Not only is that inaccurate and almost opposite of what we're recommending, but it's also a bit reductive to what the full plan really seeks to achieve. The Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan is a long-range area plan for the entire eastern portion of Cottonwood Heights, spanning the entire north-south boundary of the city, including the Wasatch Boulevard corridor and the road, but also including the surrounding neighborhoods, the foothills of the mountains, and the neighborhoods on, on either side of the corridor. Beyond city limits, the plan also acknowledges connections to adjacent municipalities, interactions with ski resorts, and other nearby areas and stakeholders. The plan establishes seven goals, and all the recommendations in the plan and, and the input and everything that the plan stands for is working to accomplish those seven goals. And their diverse goals, they, they represent many areas of interest, and they are as follows. One, preserve and enhance the character and livability of existing residential neighborhoods. Two, move people through the corridor reliably and safely. Three, increase travel choices along the Wasatch Boulevard corridor. Four, enhance opportunities for recreation along the corridor. Five, preserve and enhance scenic and natural qualities along the corridor. Six, promote and prioritize sustainable solutions to Wasatch Canyon access at a local and regional scale. And seven, identify potential land uses for new development or redevelopment in the corridor area. These goals lead to recommendations, and in this plan, a preferred scenario that represents concepts, not necessarily the only concepts, but concepts meant to provide an idea of how to achieve these goals. The final recommendations of the plan seek to balance each of these goals in a beneficial way. Following are examples of a few of the varied recommendations in the plan. One is to establish a shared-use pedestrian pathway, separate from the road, along the Wasatch Boulevard corridor. Another is to focus new commercial development opportunities in the gravel pit area or in other commercial areas of the city, in an effort to preserve the natural and recreational character of the existing corridor and neighborhoods south of Big Cottonwood Canyon. Three is to preserve key views along the corridor and emphasize the natural foothill In partnership with UDOT, consider any capacity increases to the corridor sensitively and minimize the pavement width of the roadway as much as possible. Encourage speed reduction and road design that promote the natural character of the corridor and safe access to and from residential neighborhoods. Encourage a public transit center near the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon, and promote the design of Wasatch Boulevard with public transit as a priority. Improve communication about canyon capacity and parking conditions. The full draft contains many more recommendations, but this is an example of the, the varied types of recommendations made by this plan. City leadership has the direct authority to begin implementing this plan in areas outside of the Wasatch Boulevard roadway. However, it is also important to understand that the road itself is a designated state-owned highway and has been for many years. As such, UDOT has full ownership and final jurisdiction of the roadway. Recommendations relevant to the roadway cannot be directly implemented by the city, but will represent the city's local vision for the corridor and can be used, can and will be used, to provide important local input in working with UDOT. Formal adoption of this plan strengthens the city's working partnership with UDOT and other stakeholders, including UTA, Salt Lake County, and others, and provides more opportunity for implementation of these recommendations than would otherwise exist without a plan in place. In this regard, the city has already made tremendous progress. Based on public feedback and the progress made thus far on this draft plan and also in, in UDOT's EIS process, UDOT has, has been directed to view Wasatch Boulevard as a unique gateway corridor, meriting a corridor-specific, contextual approach to the future design and function of the road. Without the public input received and without this planning process thus far, this would not have occurred. Adoption of the formal plan is important to continue to build on this opportunity and see it through. John Thomas from UDOT is in attendance tonight, and I believe has prepared some comments related to this. Finally, I'll provide a little bit of background on the public input process and the plan process thus far. The project officially kicked off in August twenty seventeen, nearly two years ago. An initial open house was held in November that year to receive general input on the area and to receive feedback for the proposed goals of the plan. The city received over a hundred items of feedback, either in attendance at the meeting or via a survey that was administered in person and online, and incorporated that feedback into the goals and into the plan. A second open house was held in March twenty eighteen to share rec, plan recommendations and potential scenarios designed around the project goals. A similar amount of feedback was received at this open house. This public input was directly incorporated into the plan and was very influential in the development of the final goals, recommendations, and preferred scenarios. In early twenty eighteen, a project webpage was established on the city website to provide public access to the draft master plan and subsequent drafts and changes made to it. After the initial public input process, the city's Planning Commission held three formal public hearings in consideration of a proposed draft master plan document. These began in July twenty eighteen and ended in September twenty eighteen. This culminated in the commission's unanimous recommendation of approval to the city council. The council first took its official public comments on the plan in September of twenty eighteen. While the plan was originally scheduled for final action in October, the council decided on a few occasions to reschedule the vote in order to provide and review additional feedback from the council and from their constituents, and to incorporate any relevant public comments heard in, in UDOT's open houses, which were also very well-attended. That feedback has been incorporated, both from members of the council, from constituents, and from comments we've received from the UDOT open house. After these months of additional time for feedback, the plan was presented at council work sessions this past May and June. Feedback and comments received by staff were incorporated into the draft plan, and all updated drafts of the plan have been consistently posted on the city website, clearly showing all changes made. In April, a link to the project webpage was posted prominently on the, the front page of the website under this, the project spotlight portion of a webpage. So in summary, the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan is a publicly responsive, well-refined documents, document with goals, objectives, and recommendations directly resulting from an open and transparent process informed by substantial public input and close collaboration with UDOT leadership and officials. City staff and the Planning Commission have recommended approval of the document. Many of the recommendations in this master plan, in fact, directly address some of the concerns we've heard in writing and in person over the past few weeks. Again, we feel this plan is an important starting point in establishing and legitimizing a clear vision of the Wasatch Boulevard area that the city can work hard to achieve on its own and in partnership with critical stakeholders such as UDOT, UTA, Salt Lake County, and others. Those are the, the comments I've prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, before we have the public come up, let's have maybe John Thomas come up, and if you would, John, just, because actually this relationship is very unique, that UDOT has proposed to the city, so maybe you could articulate that and see if the council has any questions, and then we'll open up the public comment. But it's not question and answer for the public, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is John Thomas. I'm UDOT Project Manager for Wasatch Boulevard. Been involved in the project for a while, starting with the master plan, as a technical advisory committee member, and understand the goals and objectives that your constituents have placed on that roadway. And also have gotten a lot of input from other constituents, and I've learned a lot through our open houses. Councilmember Michael has been helpful in us understanding more of the issues. Other people have offered their input, and it's, it's done something where, as an engineer, kind of like math, think I'm pretty good around the house solving problems, I don't know about anywhere else, but listening may not, or communicating may not be my strong suit. And so appreciate this opportunity to address some of the communication issues that maybe we've caused some undue consideration of the things that we're looking at here. And I think what that's actually done in hindsight is created an opportunity that is really instrumental for the first time ever in the state. And that comes from the leadership of Mayor Peterson. Mayor Peterson continued to remind me of my communication skills, and that brought in some discussions with UDOT senior leadership, where UDOT senior leadership said, based on the information we're receiving from Cottonwood Heights leadership, the mayor and others, we are going to do something we have not done anywhere else in the state. And from the executive director to the Region Two Director and Deputy Director, they have made a commitment to make Wasatch Boulevard a gateway facility. And that may mean a lot of things to different people, but I'm going to try to communicate what it does mean and see if you can help clarify that if I have left anything out. But primarily, it starts with the master plan. The master plan is key to our understanding of the needs of that- The master plan is key to our understanding of the needs of that roadway in your community. And so that's a very important guiding document for us, but it's broad and general. It's not specific. Our next step is to take this broad, general plan, refine it into what we're going to call a visioning document that has a charrette, that starts to place gateway elements in specific locations, pedestrian overpasses, trails, medians, landscaping, lighting, hardscape, gateway features, you name it, it's on the table. And that's the result of leadership at the city. Because of that, we're going to have a two-step charrette process. We have experts from around the country that are going to come in for three days to a baseline assessment of issues, go away for a few days, come back and really start to engage the council, mayor, and citizens on, here's what we're starting, this is what we heard in our first effort, here's what we're starting to see, here's our initial take. People will come in, provide comment, go away, another round of improvements, changes will occur, and at the end of that three-day process, a fairly distinct description of what that corridor will look like will be a result of that. That will then go to another refinement of a design. And at the design level, the designers will take that information and physically, or design it so that it can get constructed. And so it keeps getting refined from the master plan to the charrette process to the design. And so we've got those steps to go through, and it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to be next three to five years that we'll be able to realize the end of that. But I think the message is tonight, because of Cottonwood Heights' involvement and cooperation with UDOT and expressing concerns, there's something new on the table, and it's really exciting. I think it's, I can't wait to get started as an engineer and listening to your citizens and trying to understand what best fits your community is really important. Another thing that has been expressed as a topic is speed, and we've tried several different ways to address that, through speed studies, through trying to see what boundaries we had available to us. None of those seem satisfactory. Recently, our traffic engineers came up with an idea where we're going to try to post, this is a work in progress, but we're trying to find a way, and it looks pretty positive, to post it at 35 miles an hour. And so we're going to try to do that.
Y'all can clap now. Thank you.
We still have a couple of things to work through, but the intent is to try to get it there. And so thank you for the comments, the input from your constituents and from the council and mayor.
Okay, John, thank you very much, and for the audience and for the council. You know, what he just articulated is something we've not seen in Utah before, especially with the state and with UDOT, and I was in such awe and question. Yesterday, I made contact with his supervisor, Carlos Beceras, who's the director of UDOT, and articulated basically what John just said, and he confirmed to me, yes, that is true, that this is going to be looked at much differently than just a standard cookie-cutter road that's going to go through here, but it can look as a gateway with many, many unique enhancements designed specifically for our resident. So this is a great opportunity, John, and thank you. And open up any questions from the council before we open up for public comment. Any questions, comments?
I have one comment, and you're the engineer, you probably already know this so partially. It's just maybe to remind you and/or to let some others know, but simply changing these signs on Wasatch probably won't completely accomplish a reduction in speed. Probably is part of your process, also looking at some geometries or other devices that would help drivers comply with that requirement, rather than just have, all of a sudden, everybody's breaking the law.
So if we go to, if you can imagine a Boulevard, landscape, median, things feel close in, rather than, I just drove up foothill coming to this meeting, and I was like, oh, it's a five-lane roadway, wow, there's a lot of pavement, I want to go fast, but...
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Right, and so when you go south of, on Wasatch Boulevard, past 94th, you start to feel that, those features right there, and a lot of it is just in the design. A lot of it will be in enforcement, because it is a commuter route. And so there needs to be that, both pieces of that for a while, at least the enforcement. People do get used to the 50 mile an hour speed, we get that, but we think having those features, even if it's a five-lane roadway or three-lane, but a five-lane is what's been in the long-range plan, it's what the volumes, say, our cross-section needs to look like. We think there's a good opportunity to design it so that people won't feel the need to go 50 miles an hour faster.
And for setting expectations, that's probably not something that's going to happen in the next few months, probably in that three-to-five-year timeframe?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure.
The reduction in speed, is that part of the entire process?
Yeah, once we get to the full design, and that's the trigger, we're finding a little way to use a trigger of new construction to post it at a new speed limit. So we're working on that. One of the things on the cross-section, I read, and this goes back to my communication skills or lack of, comment about the cross-section being seven lanes, and I read that, and I was like, we never did seven lanes, but actually we did. And what we had done was, we said, well, here's the five-lane section from the long-range plan for cars, but transit, you know, here's a transit opportunity, we could do shoulder-running buses. And so we showed a bus in the outside lanes, we had seven lanes. But our intent was peak-period transit, very early concepts, just trying to get information out there in these early meetings, so.
Thank you, thank you, and I know, again, there'll be a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion, and nothing is set. Again, a master plan is a living document, additional information, data will modify things moving forward. But any further comments from the council? John, thank you so much for joining us, I know you were here last night as well, and Mike, thanks for your effort, and now we'll open it up to public comment.
Sorry, Mayor, I might...
Oh, go ahead.
Address John while he's taking his seat. I want to personally thank John Thomas. Initially, when we started working with him, there were parking rides along the whole Wasatch corridor, and that was about 18 months ago, probably. And I truly, in my heart, believe that UDOT is sincere here and sincerely is listening to the opinions of our community, because those parking rides are no longer in our master plan nor in their plan. So I do want to say, those of you who plan to make comments here, know that John is being sincere. We're all human beings, we all want to do the right thing, and as John F. Kennedy said, a rising tide will lift all boats. So let's think about the tide and the boats, and I think we'll really be proud of what we see in the next three or five years, so thank you.
All right, ready for the comments? Ron Schwartz, Ron, come on up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I've lived here about five years now. I'm an electrical engineer, there's some other engineers in the room, I see, and my, I'm an electrical engineer, and my hobby is amateur radio, and I'm a member of the Cottonwood Heights Amateur Radio Club.
Thank you for your service there.
Yeah, and that club provides emergency communications at times of disasters, and I was really welcomed as a member of that club by all members of the club, and I appreciate what the support is of the council to continue the, providing the space to use here occasionally for those communications, and put antennas on the roof for ham radio, but all this is for emergency communication. And so I feel really supported of that. For the Wasatch Boulevard project, I really expected to be better informed and brought along with the plans and as they were developed, and I feel that I personally didn't get as sufficient time to review and comment on the project, and I hope to see the better communication going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
As a resident and homeowner of the Cottonwood Heights community for over 26 years, I would like to have a clear, concise report showcasing the preferred scenario for the Wasatch Boulevard master plan, and I suggest maybe only using pages three to 12, 136 to 145, and 155 to 162, or at least using bold type for those pages in the document. This would reduce confusion and vagueness of the current document. The three alternative scenarios just add to the confusion. Promoting the preferred scenario gives the Cottonwood Heights City Council and the residents more impact on the possible future of Wasatch Boulevard, rather than yet letting UDOT pick their desired option. Emphasis on reducing speed to 35 miles per hour through various calming measures on Wasatch, use protected bike lanes for increased safety and enjoyment, and increased use of buses with direct travel from the 215 section to the ski areas are desirable. Bus availability for commuters and skiers will help the current situation. Prior to widening the easements in delicate seismic and land movement areas, there should be a thorough evaluation to ensure no adverse effects will be caused to homeowners or nearby homeowners. Additional construction at the mouth of canyons will likely increase the congestion problems. Parking could be moved northward closer to 215. Faulting in the gravel pit should be a consideration for walkability in the area, not multi-story buildings. And then, I haven't seen this here in Utah, but I know when I've gone to other states, a lot of times they'll say, turn to a certain radio station, and then you can get updates. So I'm thinking, communication to commuters, skiers, and others using Wasatch might be facilitated by tuning into a specific radio channel for updates every 10 or 15 minutes on avalanche control, filling of parking lots, chain requirements, et cetera, or perhaps through a station like KSL. This would reduce the need to put up additional big electronic signs, yet update people in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Lynn McAdams?
Hello.
Welcome.
I live on McLean Mountain Circle, which is just above Wasatch Boulevard, so I see the traffic every day, and we don't have a big traffic problem on Wasatch Boulevard, except on snow days. And if you look at Wasatch Boulevard as it goes past the gravel pit, it is a massive roadway, and it's still only five lanes. I hope that we're not going to end up with something that is like that, going up toward the canyon, and I think the real key to it is, you know, making it uncomfortable for people to drive up the canyon. You know, if they get, if they can ride the bus for less money and the buses are convenient, I think that that's the key to our traffic problem. And also lowering the speed limit will keep the commuters from draper from using Wasatch Boulevard, because it'll be faster to take the freeway. The other thing is, could we please have a noise ordinance on Wasatch Boulevard? Because we have big groups of motorcycle riders who go up there 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night with their fancy exhausts, and it's really loud. Do we have a noise ordinance for that?
Well, we have a noise ordinance, but if you have a particular issue, then you can contact our police and they'll evaluate it.
Okay, because I've never seen it in...
Usually noise is managed by the health department, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay, and then also, I hope that there's the pollution part addressed in the Wasatch Boulevard thing, because I can tell you that my decks and everything are filthy in the spring, and it's from all the idling cars. So if we can do non-idling too, that would help, but thank you very much.
Lynn, thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Amelia Ortega, and my husband and I live on Creek Road, up near the top, up near Wasatch. We're homeowners there, and we love our beautiful neighborhood. We appreciate living on the mountain bench and the rural feel and look of Wasatch Boulevard as it is today. The only thing we'd like to see is, like everybody else, a lower speed limit. I'm a little concerned about roads in Cottonwood Heights. When we moved three years ago from Minnesota to Cottonwood Heights, we saw our street, that there is a sign posted that says that there are no trucks allowed on our street, and we have many, many, many trucks on that road all the time, so it doesn't seem like anybody polices the rules. That's a concern that I have. The need for every effort to reduce air pollution needs to be made before we look like Los Angeles in the late 60s, and we don't need bigger, faster roads for more cars. Electric or natural gas buses are needed to shuttle skiers up and down the mountain. They should be free and frequent and provide enough incentive to leave cars behind. The roads up the mountain are not wide or fast. How does it make sense to have a wide, high-speed road empty into those canyon roads? It just, it's illogical. Please don't touch Wasatch Road in any significant way. We appreciate how it is now and how it contributes to the beauty, the character, ambiance of living on the mountain bench. Lower the speed limit and allow us to continue to enjoy that beautiful stretch of mountain road. I've got some concerns about environmental issues, about animals that use, that cross over Wasatch, and, you know, reasons that they may be doing that. Is that their access to water, is that part of their breeding cycles that they need to be doing those things? I haven't heard anything about the animals, and would like to hear about that. Also, very concerned about geological considerations. We've got a lot of fault lines, and as a person who has gone through several seven-point-higher earthquakes, you know, I really don't want to see things destabilized or create big concerns for mudslides. So I'd like you to all really be a whole lot better at communicating. You've been really very, very poor in communicating. We haven't heard anything. My neighbors had not heard anything about this, and if you can't do that, then you're really not serving the people of Cottonwood Heights. You need to serve us, and that means that you need to communicate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. Mr. Crandall, Ryan?
Hi, my name is Ryan Crandall, I live in the top-of-the-world neighborhood. Just want to touch on a couple of things that people mentioned before me. I work in Park City, there's several noticing requirements in Park City. I work for a real estate building company, and there are several noticing requirements within anyone in that zone. I have not received any notices, I have done a Google Alert, never received a Google Alert, I have asked UDOT to be on a mailing list, never been on a mailing list. The only reason I was able to find out this meeting today is I saw it in the, I think it was called the Cottonwood Heights Journal. I saw an article in there and I found it. I believe in that same journal article, they said there is an 865-person petition, I'm not one of those, but there's a petition. And I think, looking around, I'm guessing a lot of those people didn't hear about this meeting, because I imagine we get some percentage of them, it seems like a lot of people know each other and you know them, so I feel like we're, there is a disconnect, and that's just my personal opinion. Going back to what the woman just said, I have to speak quick because I have a lot, so I apologize if I speak very fast. I think there is a throughput issue along Wasatch, there's really day-to-day, not much traffic. You see it basically on Saturday mornings during the ski season. Even if you went to five, six, 10, 50 lanes, it's still a throughput issue with the bottleneck going up the canyon. I feel like it's going to be a phasing plan, I'm sure we all know that. I feel like we're getting very bogged down on Wasatch, we need to worry about the canyons, how we're going to get these people up. I haven't heard anything about that, that's going to be very expensive, and it'd be interesting to hear that, other than, you know, speed limits, which are, I guess, great. Sorry, moving on to my two points. I guess my main point tonight is this. Your website says, and Mr. Johnson said, that this is a draft document. Mr. Johnson tonight used some interesting words like "long-range," "guide," "goal," "objective," "a living document," and it's not a binding document. So I read an article on KUTV, from KUTV, on... So I read an article on KU-TV, from KU-TV, on April 2019, I guess, after your meeting in, was it, in March, there was a, the UDOT went to six homeowners, I'm not one of them, I don't know them, went to six homeowners, and told them that they may have their homes imminently domained. This is a big problem. When we're talking about the lives of people, and we're talking in terms of a living document, guides, long-range objectives, and you're hurting people's housing prices, that is not, that's not okay to me. I feel like I find that very unethical. When we're talking about a plan that's three to five years, as the UDOT representative said, three to five years down the road, and this man was approached by UDOT saying that you may have your home imminently domained, now he has to disclose that. Unfortunately, he has a family death, if he wants to cash out, if he has to retire, and he wants to move, guess what? He has to disclose, disclose, he has an option of intimate domain on those six homes. What is that going to do? Would you, any of you, ask yourselves, would you want to buy a home, I'll go quick, that wants to be possibly sold in the next three to five years, 10 years, 50 years? We live in a bureaucracy. We don't know when this is going to happen, or if it will happen. But unfortunately, this man has been negatively impacted. I think it's fun to talk about boulders, and traffic, and this and that, but I think we really need to focus on being responsible to the shareholders in this community, and not damaging them, because it's fun to talk, doesn't hurt anybody. If we say, I want to go from 50 to 30, or I want this tree or that tree, it's fun. It doesn't hurt anybody. But this is literally hurting this group of people's pocketbooks, and it could hurt their families. And I find that kind of, not a lack of backward words, kind of disgusting. So I hope you take this more seriously, as not saying you're not, but please look at your power that you have as a planning commissioner, City Council, and really look at that, because you can affect people's lives, and their future children's lives. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your comments. Lynn Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Lynn Kraus, District 2. First of all, I am ecstatic over what I heard from John Thomas. I just think that's huge. That's just going to go a long way to making everybody feel much more comfortable. With regard to the Wasatch Boulevard master plan, I want to commend all of you for the time and effort, particularly Mike, that's gone into that. I know it's been difficult. I also commend you on the open houses that were held, and I really feel like the public comments that were made during those meetings have been, for the most part, incorporated into the preferred scenario. Having said that, and I think I made this public comment in August of last year, this document is massive. And I think it was this Nancy here, I had some great points, and that's exactly what I wanted to say. It's too stinking big, really. I mean, I feel like the preferred scenario should be it, and that would be much easier to take to UDOT. I mean, I tried to skim 169 pages, and it was just insane. It's just too hard to do. But it wouldn't be nice to see the preferred scenario, and the goals and objectives, and the really crucial part be in a document, and make all the rest of it an appendix, or And that's what I said last year, and I feel the same way. And also, based on the comments that Mike made during the work session, if it takes that much effort to explain this document to the citizens, it's obviously not working, right? So it needs to be more simple, so that the layperson can understand. It's not the language itself. The language is fine. It's just too darn big. I mean, really. It just needs to be more simple, so that people don't have to have it explained to them. And really, in summary, I just hope that UDOT really does work with us, and I really hope you guys stick to your guns, stick to this master plan, and really use it as a tool to work with them. And I just pray UDOT does what they say they're going to do, and if they do, I think it'll go a long way. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Deborah Case. Deborah?
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
All right. Hello, my name is Deborah Case, and yes, I am running for City Council, District 1, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here because Wasatch Boulevard is on the agenda. Now firstly, I believe this is an inappropriate time to have a vote on this topic. The Wasatch Boulevard master plan is a hot topic and widely controversial. There are many different ideas on the best solution for the issues, but most of the people are feeling confused. Confused and frustrated. When I went door-to-door with Unite for CH, I met a lot of the local residents. The residents voiced their frustration in not getting information, and about not feeling heard or represented in City Hall. This is an extremely important topic, and one that is close to our residents' hearts. Wasatch Boulevard is a lifeline for people, to travel across the city, to their jobs, schools, their neighbors, to hiking and biking trails, to the mountains and wildlife. People build their lives and their homes on Wasatch Boulevard. Choosing to vote on it just days before a national holiday, and a rare four-day weekend is ludicrous. Most people are impacted, more people are impacted by and care deeply about this issue. It is a topic of discussion across the board in our community. There are so many people that want to be involved in this process. People that are, right now, with their families, preparing food for parties, for travel, for trips and celebration. Most of them aren't here today to speak and to show support, but they will be, and they won't be happy. With two of our council members up for reelection in the upcoming months, the citizens' feelings and responses should be paramount. This is not a time to slide another major piece of litigation right under their noses when their hands are tied. I'm here to urge you to postpone this vote until further notice. Consider your actions. There is no harm in waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate those comments. Brian Allen. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Allen. I live on Cottonwood Cove Lane. I've been a resident of Cottonwood Heights for 34 years now, I believe. So it's not the sleepy area that I moved into 30-some-odd years ago. It has changed a lot. It's grown a lot. And I used to, I remember when I first moved in, I used to run down in the Old Mill area, and it was a single-lane highway wooded. There was no building down there. There were no homes down there. It was gorgeous. Loved it. Used to see deer out in my morning runs. Obviously, that's changed. That's part of what happens in a vibrant city that's growing. And it wasn't even a city then. I used to bike along Wasatch Boulevard. For my own personal safety, I've stopped doing that, because the road is too narrow for the kind of traffic that's on there, and it's not safe to bike along, unless you're doing it really early in the morning before traffic hits, or late at night, when it's kind of dark for biking. But, look, I want to, first of all, express my appreciation to the citizens who have commented, who have been engaged in this. I think they have, I think that commentary has probably prompted the effort by UDOT to do more engagement going forward, and I think that's a positive thing. But I want also to know that I support the master plan. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think doing what you need to do to Wasatch Boulevard, turning it into two lanes in each direction with bike paths and walking paths, and creating a boulevard kind of a gateway, I think is appropriate. I was in the state legislature back in the mid-'90s. There was talk then with UDOT about widening that highway, that roadway between the canyons. And this is not something that's a new thing. We have growth coming. We have to plan for it responsibly. And keeping things as they are, sadly, isn't really an option. I remember a time when people were protesting the homes being built on Top of the World Drive, and how that was going to spoil the foothills, and spoil the view. But now, we have beautiful homes up there. We have wonderful people who've moved into the neighborhood, and it really hasn't, honestly, I mean, it was, like, for those that maybe look up at it, maybe it did bother them at first, but I think over time, there's beauty there. There's beauty in that. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of those kinds of things that were very, very controversial when they were first proposed. I mean, I took a lot of criticism when I was in the legislature for supporting light rail. And, I mean, I don't think there's very many people now who would say we should do away with it, because it works super, super well, and as the valley grows and becomes more populated, we have to make those changes. And Wasatch Boulevard is one of those areas. And I think the thing I did hear tonight that is encouraging, is that this isn't, I mean, a master plan is just that. It's a plan. It's a concept. It's an idea. But there will be time to have citizen involvement, citizen input, and to shape that as it moves forward, and I think that's a very positive thing. And I just want to say, I want to applaud the council for your thoughtful approach, and for your effort in really trying to figure out ways to make the city grow appropriately, grow effectively, and still balance all of the various interests and needs that are out there. And I want to thank you for that. I think you've done a marvelous job. I like the plan. And I want to thank UDOT for thinking outside the box on this one, and doing something that has never been done before in this state. And I think that's a real positive step forward, not just for us, in our community, but I think, long-term, that's going to serve UDOT super well as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate those comments, along with everyone else's. Jennifer Murphy. Jennifer?
Hey, I live on Top of the World, above Honeycomb, or where Honeycomb comes in. John and I are on a first-name basis since this all started, and I'm really excited that they're really considering the 35 mile-an-hour speed limit. I would really like to see more law enforcement on snow days of people cutting through the Top of the World neighborhood, because I have personally almost been hit multiple times by skiers cutting through the neighborhood to get around the traffic while I'm trying to blow the snow in the driveway, which, when my husband is out of town, I have to do it, and the snow blower is as big as me. And I would like to see more, with this, people cutting through the neighborhood to get around the traffic, more speed bumps on the north side of Top of the World Drive. We have one, and then it opens up, and people come flying around the corner, and there's a grade. But, and even the grade coming down Honeywood Cove, the biggest thing I'm excited about with the lower speed limit is when you slide and accidentally hit that bump, and you might go out into the intersection. People might be slow enough to go around you. But I'm really excited about the lower speed limit, possibly. And that's one of the few times I'm actually in town in the summer, so.
Jennifer, thank you for those comments. Nancy, come up again.
I just came to mind when Mike Johnson mentioned about the transit center near the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon. I don't know if that's really what the placement might be, but.
Probably in the gravel pit areas, I think, what we're looking at.
Right.
I don't think it's any news, that the legislature, this last session, allocated $13 million to help in doing property acquisitions, so.
But I was just, I didn't know, who gets to decide the placement of the transit center within the gravel pit? Because if it's closer to Big Cottonwood Canyon, that's convenient for the ski areas, but that would have a negative impact on Fort Union. If it was closer to I-215, it would be more beneficial, because you could transit people to Park City, or the airport, or even downtown. It would just be more of a transit hub. So I didn't know who has, if we have any say-so, or if it's up to the developers when they develop that, and they say, okay, well, we'll put it over here.
It'll be a process, with a lot of input from a lot of people, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. That's an exciting topic. Cindy? I won't try to say that last name, because I'll say it wrong.
Yuriona.
Yuriona. Thank you. I could have said that. That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, we try to pronounce it like it looks. Yeah, so I'm Cindy Yuriona, and I've been a resident of Cottonwood Heights for eight years. And I'm in public service. I'm a Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway, so I represent, and have been in the households of many homeowners in Cottonwood Heights for some time. And most recent dealings that I had were up near the Tree Farm Estates, which really impacts the Wasatch, and that's when I heard about the Wasatch Plan. And the neighbors there, several of them told me that that, when you come on, it's 8350 South Wasatch Boulevard, which is just south of Golden Hills Park, and just across from the fire station up there. So that street goes into, then, a circle, and Austrian Way, Tall Pine Lane, and it is the only street for those, all those neighbors to get out. And so they were all complaining of the traffic problem with Wasatch, that there is no light there, and how fast the traffic is going. So with ample showings, and broker opens, and so on, I got to witness that myself. And we, I really admire the electric buses that they put into Park City. We also have a home up there, and spend a lot of time, and they're just so effective, and so clean, and I believe, so I'm really aware of the influx of people, and how the population is growing. We had another study from the Ken Gardner's Institute. The economist came and spoke with us again today about what's happening in the economy and the housing market. And we've got a whole lot more people coming here. Everybody knows that. And if we could get more park-and-rides, and more buses up to the resorts, more effective buses, more electric buses, I think could solve a big issue of the traffic. And I will be very excited to see what are some of the planned options on the gravel pit. I haven't, I saw two. And then I can second this 169-page document. It'd be great to see that shortened. And having more of this information when the meetings are in the newsletter, and the website is quite vague. So making that more user-friendly for us would be great, and appreciate all of your service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Now Cindy's the last card I have. Is there anyone who would like to come on up?
Thank you for allowing me to come a second time to talk to you. So I have lived here in Cottonwood Heights for about five years. And the first thing that DOT was working on, that I became involved with, was the High-T intersection. And I went to numerous meetings, and gave input, and told them about problems that I could foresee, at least for residents in my area, with the High-T. And one of them is that when traffic goes through the High-T, where there's no stoplight, they come, and they come, and they come, and there is no brake in traffic. And so there's times where I've had to sit and wait for 10 or 15 minutes, and then I get out onto the road by, I hope that there's enough room, because this is unsafe, because they're going 50 miles an hour or more, and they're just speeding through there, and there's a constant stream. I gave a lot of input, and then the way they make the turn through the light is incredibly dangerous for bicycles, in my opinion, and it's also really difficult to navigate, because the lanes are narrow, and it's a sharp turn, and they made it sharper than what it had been. And I talked with them, and I tried to share those concerns, and it was like, yeah, well, but, yeah, okay, we hear you, we'll address it. And it was really never addressed, and now we have the High-T intersection the way it is. And it is a problem, and I don't feel like I was really listened to, nor people in the community were listened to, about that particular development. And I really appreciate the way the City Council and DOT is working together. I don't know how much influence the council had on that, because I think it was on the very edge of Cottonwood Heights. I'm concerned about increasing the number of lanes along Wasatch, because there have been numerous studies that have indicated that when we increase lanes, all we do is increase the traffic, and it doesn't really ultimately solve the problem. And I think one of the problems that I'm seeing in the future is the whole pollution. Our air is incredibly impacted in the winter with the inversions, and it's only going to get worse. only going to get worse. And I really feel that we need to promote the high-speed rail, and I think we need to look at expanding that and making that easier for people to be able to use. So maybe having buses being able to pick up people and take them to a high-speed rail location so that they can travel, and making that user-friendly. The other comment that I'd like to make is, I did go, and I have gone to a lot of the meetings about Wasatch and the planning, and I do want to say I think they are very well-run. I really appreciate the input and DOT's presence. I appreciate the council member and Mike's presence there to be able to answer questions and talk to citizens, so I really appreciate that. However, when I've gone to the website and tried to find things, I can't find it. I can't find the links. Mike talked about that there was a link there. I couldn't find it. I don't know where to go. I mean, my logic is not the way the logic is working. And I guess I'm really concerned about pollution. I'm concerned very much about the speed of the traffic, because right now I see the speed with the bicycles next to the roadway as being extremely unsafe, and I don't want us to have to react to a situation where someone is killed or seriously hurt, and I have seen people seriously hurt along that roadway. So whatever Mr. Thompson can do to speed up, drop in that speed limit, I would truly appreciate. Thank you.
Now, you were Joe Clay, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure that I had the right person. Okay, thank you.
That will help the transcriber for the minutes, make sure.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate that. Anyone else who has not spoken on the Wasatch Boulevard who would like to speak? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the citizen comment period on the agenda. And would like to now give an opportunity, if anybody on the council would like to speak, to the subject of the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan before we call for a vote. Any comments at this point, or you can do it in a minute? Any comments?
I do have one question for Mike Johnson. We have had a couple people talk about the weight of this. What is involved actually in maybe taking some of the narrative out and putting it in pen x? Is that a major reformat for you?
No, and I think one option could potentially be, the first 10 or 12 pages is essentially an executive summary, summarizes goals and preferred scenario. We could post the entire plan and then post the executive summary as a separate PDF. Doesn't change the plan at all, it just creates a shorter streamlined version.
A motion of that effect wouldn't bother you?
I don't even think it requires a motion.
Kind of a question for Tim.
Yeah, I don't think that would require a motion as well. I think that we could just do that as a structural element related to the plan and how it's displayed.
There's a lot of really good information in the plan, but I do understand...
I think we agree with that. When we saw one of the earlier drafts, when the preferred scenario was at the back of the plan, we moved it to the front. So it was because, I think it was Lynn's comments early on, but I think those are all valuable comments, and we apologize to those citizens that feel there was not communication. We assure you that's one of our highest priorities, and it's something we talk about on a every-meeting basis, you know, that there have been hundreds and hundreds of comments that have come in on this plan. There's been numerous open houses. It's been on our website, and yeah, we'll continue to modify our communication, continue to try and prove it, and make it more and more transparent. But it's been a two-and-a-half-year process. I've had numerous emails that I've responded to, and so, you know, we'll continue to look at our communication patterns, and we'll always be adjusting. I don't think that ever stops. But any other comments at this time before we call for a vote?
I had a couple more.
Okay, go right ahead. I'm sorry I cut you off.
I understand the comments about the website. I don't know why we haven't figured it out, but making a website that is easily searchable, at least the way I would like to search it, has been a challenge. But to that end, I know that a new one is under development, and we're hoping that they can come up with better search engines that will allow better access there. And I did want to appreciate, express appreciation to Joe Clay for saying that she felt, unfortunately, that was a hindrance, but that she felt the duty to actually become informed and be involved and to find those things. For the people who want to do that, should be, it should be easy to do. And we, there's always room for improvement.
I would concur with the efforts to better our communication. I think there's a handful of people that are really engaged in what's happening in the city, and they're aware how long this process has been going, but the bulk of the people are going about their daily lives, and they hear about these things after the fact, even if we've been talking about it for 18 or 24 months. So I would like to see us adopt some kind of aggressive communication, maybe seven different communication attempts to the public via seven different mediums, like an aggressive communication policy. And then with the timing of this, I know there's been some citizens requesting that we postpone this yet again, but I think John Thomas would agree, time is of the essence for UDOT to get this. And by giving a unified vision from the council, it really helps solidify our partnership with the direction, and we're really excited about the comments that he shared tonight.
So there's a comment made by Mike Johnson that we were supposed to vote on this in October, and several of us on the council repeatedly asked for more time so we could have more public comment. During that time, we reached out to John Thomas and asked if he would come to our city hall and talk about short-term and long-term solutions for Wasatch Boulevard. And John came to this, came to our city hall and brought his engineers and made himself and his team available for comments. I think what's indicative of maybe our communication, and maybe my fault, was maybe there were 10 of us, and maybe one person who's here tonight was in attendance at that meeting. So I hate for you all to leave here thinking that we're not trying. I think we're trying, but I think what would help us immensely is to provide your feedback as to how we could communicate better, because clearly we're missing the mark. We know that our newsletter is probably not informative. We've been talking that for a long time, and we have a new public relations specialist that's going to help us improve that. We know our website needs to be fixed, and we have a contractor that's working on that. I suggest that perhaps we could have a group of interested citizens review the website before it goes live, so that we could make sure that everybody's interesting search methods are utilized, and we make sure that website works for people. So I want you to walk away knowing that we do value your input, and we are trying, but please provide us comments, send us emails, call city manager Tim. We're all here available to sit down with you. I think Mike Johnson sat down for two hours with constituents that wanted to go over and talk about the master plan. I think our willingness to listen and adapt is clear. I, like many of you, spent, I don't know, probably five hours or something going through this and documenting all of my changes, and sharing that with the council, and sharing that with Mike. And I'm happy to say that most of my recommendations were adopted. I specifically said if we're going to add lanes, those should be used for transit, not for commuter traffic. You could see that, I think, on page six. Emphasis on any roadway widening being done in a transit-prioritized way, flex lanes, transit, preemption BRT, bus rapid transit. As a council, we asked our lobbyists this year to go to the state legislature and find money to the $13 million that the mayor spoke to earlier, so that we could procure land for bus rapid transit or some kind of a mass transit hub. UDOT supported us in that. So I know it's hard to get through this document. It was hard for me to get through it. It pained me to go through it. I had a lot of consternation and anger and passion, a lot of what I heard from you all tonight. But just know that we hear you, we feel you, we understand where you're coming from. We're trying, and we're going to keep doing all we can to get solutions that enhance our community. So we appreciate everybody coming tonight. I personally am going to vote for this tonight. We've spent a lot of time. I feel proud of this document. It could be better, but I think Mike's done a great job, and so we thank him for his time, and city manager Tim. And that's where I stand. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shelton?
Let me just highlight something that council member Michael said there. She said something that's important to me, too. And she said nearly everything that she asked for was incorporated. And I would say the same for me. Nearly everything I asked for was incorporated, but some of what she asked for, some of what I asked for, was not. It's not because we weren't heard. We had a great opportunity to make our case for the things that were important to us. Some of what was important to us was not incorporated. Some of what is important to you may not have been incorporated either. And when you have to make a decision as a committee, that's what happens. Not everybody has everything that they want incorporated in the document. There are a handful of things that are not incorporated in this document that are important to me. I think one thing we should always say in a document of this type is that we should, as a goal, respect the property rights of those who own land in the city. It's an important issue in everything we do, that we recognize that those who own land have rights. And I don't think there's any effort here to diminish the rights of any particular group of people. You'll notice we changed some language lately, recently maybe I should say, regarding the concept of where a transit hub might be. That was important to me because we don't own any ground as a city that can be used as a transit hub. If we are to put a transit hub somewhere in the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon, it will be because we find a way to work with a private property owner and make an acquisition of property, or make an arrangement with that property owner that's agreeable to them who own the property and to us, and to others who have a big say in that idea as well. So I'm grateful for the hard work that's gone into this. I wish everything that was really important to me was here. Most of what's really important to me is, and I'm grateful for all the hard work and many, many hours from many who went into bringing this document to where it is.
Thank you. And I'll be brief, because you've heard some important comments from our council, and I'll echo most of those. But I think one of the most important things that I look at, I look at the last two-plus years since we started this process, and where we are today, with the product we have today, the relationship we have with UDOT, the potential that we now have to implement something with a much more positive impact for that corridor is phenomenal. I've been in public service for 45 years. I don't think I've ever seen something kind of develop and incorporate so many comments from hundreds of people, and to see an agency like UDOT step forward and change their whole mode of operation and process because of that public input. People say they haven't been heard, but at the same time, it's that public input by hundreds that have changed this direction. I think the people have been heard, and because of that, we have a great opportunity. Now, going forward, we hear you again tonight. The communication is going to be critical. I think it's Jill that talked about, put something on our newsletter that identifies where things are. That was something that came from one of our council members just tonight. We're looking at those things. We're looking at our website, and we'll continue to work on those. But I'm proud of the efforts of our staff. I applaud UDOT for stepping forward based upon this input, and, you know, and let's go forward. Let's continue to work together. Now, if any of you out there, okay, who are either listening online or here tonight would like to meet with us and talk about details, call us anytime. I have never turned down an opportunity to meet if somebody calls me personally, and we'll answer questions. And we want to be available to you for that. So thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate the council's work on this, because this has not been an easy process for us as well because of many opinions. So with that being said, in our action items tonight, item number 4.1 is consideration of ordinance 328 approving a Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan element of the city's general plan. I would entertain a motion for that item. Somebody is so brave.
I move that we pass. Go ahead, Scott.
I defer to councilman or council member Michael.
It's your district. You want to?
I move that we approve ordinance 328 approving a Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan element of the city's general plan. Second?
It's been moved by Councilor Michael. It's been seconded by Councilor Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you for everyone's participation. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution 2019-33, adopting a public property use policy. Shane, would you maybe just like to give a quick narrative of what this is for our audience?
Sure. Historically, the Utah Code has made it clearly a crime to misuse public monies, but it hasn't been quite so clear about the misuse of public property. That was changed in this last session of the legislature when the Utah Legislature enacted HB 163, which basically criminalizes and enhances the criminal penalties for misuse of public property. In that legislation, however, the legislature invited local government units like this city to enact a policy that defines what permissible use of, permissible private use of public property may be, recognizing that the city has a lot of employees who are entrusted with various items of city property. It may be cell phones, it may be pens and pencils, it may be, you know, having their families come to city hall to greet them during lunch. All of those things, under the new law, could arguably become misuse of public property absent a policy, basically recognizing that certain de minimis, non-substantial sorts of use, private use of public property is permissible. That is what this resolution does, enact a policy defining what permissible, the permissible scope of private use of public property is.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for consideration of resolution 2019-33, the public property use policy.
We approve resolution 2019-33.
It's been moved by councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote. Councilor Michael?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item of business is approving a consulting agreement with Landmark Design for analysis of code chapter 19.51, which is our PDD zone, to make some appropriate adjustments to that. Mr. Johnson, you want to just maybe give us a couple of comments on that for the audience?
Thank you, Mayor. This proposal is to enter into a contract agreement with Landmark Design. They're a professional planning firm. It was one of the council's priorities for 2019, and reflected in the city's administrative direction plan to review and make necessary modifications to the planned development district code in our city ordinance. The code's been adopted for a number of years, but until recently had not been utilized. Through that process of utilizing the ordinance, I think all parties involved recognize some, you know, some confusion, some inconsistencies, some things that could use clarification, and we recommend initiating this service with a private planning firm to make sure this gets done at a high level and in a timely manner. We have, we did meet and solicit requests from numerous different consulting firms and feel that Landmark is best suited for this.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion on this topic?
Yeah, I had a comment. Just the Ball's property was kind of our trial run with the PDD, and I felt like it was horrific. Just the Walsh property was kind of our trial run with the PDD, and I felt like it was horrific. So I'm thrilled that we are revisiting the PDD prior to its utilization at the gravel pit.
Thank you. I think we all agree that some language in there needs to be adjusted. Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a motion on item four-point-three, resolution twenty-nineteen-dash-thirty-four, the consulting agreement with subject to, I think.
Right. I apologize, my computer just died, but I would just ask that we would move to approve consideration twenty-nineteen-thirty-four, but that we amend the scope of work on page one, number three, to include the council. I'm, I apologize.
Subject to that inclusion of that language, yes.
Yes, thanks.
Second.
It's moved in by Councilor Michael, seconded by council member Shelton. Any further discussion? Okay, I'd call for the vote. Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Bracken?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilor Michael?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Last item is the consent calendar, which is approval of the city council work session and CDR meeting, and business meeting minutes of May twenty-first. A motion for approval of those minutes.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's moved, we adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
They're not planning on going back, correct?